Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the December 20, December 10, 2024, School Board Workshop, um, one officially called the Workshop to Order. There was some agenda amendments added after publishing on Friday, December 6, 2024. We removed the workshop item board discussion regarding authorization to join the multi-district lawsuit regarding insulin on behalf of the school district of Manatee County. Um, attorneys, you want to give any update on where it's at or nope? We're good.
It was determined, Chair, that because of the defendants in that case, we had not done any business with those, so it would be pointless to go through the kind of workshop on that item.
Thank you, appreciate it. Appreciate you guys looking out for the district, though. Appreciate that.
The case is against the middlemen in the pharmacy world that you hire to, with your self-insure program.
Gotcha.
And they're going after those companies, and none of them are ones that the district has used.
Gotcha.
So we found that out in time.
Thank you. Uh, board members, we are using Granicus for the workshops. I know we have it in the past. Figured it'd be a little bit cleaner, though, for speaking and stuff like that instead of going around.
Yeah.
So, um, we will use that, uh, in the workshop. Public comment, I do not see any for the workshop. So we will move right into, uh, our first item, which is discussion regarding the 2025 district legislative platform. I know, uh, I was talking with Mr. Chapman about this. Board, the reason why we're throwing this on here is the legislative, or the delegation date is January 9th, I believe. I'm asking off the cuff.
I think that's good.
I think it's January 9th. And so we wanted to have ours, and I know we'd already previously discussed before the two new board members were here, the Greater Florida Consortium, which we have, we have our old one as well. So, um, we also have our, um, our lobbyists, I don't know if it's Bo, Sean, Andrew are going to be on, are they on Teams? Are they there and good? Connection's good?
I think we're.
Sean, did you guys hear us? We're good?
There we go. There we go.
I think that's a yes.
That was mute.
I don't know my S.O.I., I don't know. Well, um, but I'll give it to you, Mr. Chapman, if you want to start.
Sure.
And then allow them to jump in and do their thing, and then we'll discuss.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the, uh, two new board members, uh, we, uh, the board, uh, heading into session, uh, we like to have a workshop to, um, uh, see what you all, again, um, this is a way, you know, workshops and board meetings are on the way for you all to discuss, uh, in sunshine. So it's a good way, heading into session, the new legislative session in Tallahassee, to discuss what your all's legislative priorities should be as a school board, uh, heading into that new session. Uh, joining us, uh, virtually, uh, from Tallahassee, live from Tallahassee, uh, is Andrew Colwell from Sunrise Consulting, uh, who is our government affairs representatives up there in Tallahassee. Um, and so, uh, this is our, uh, your workshop to really discuss what, uh, you all would like to have Andrew and Sean Foster work on, uh, while they're up there. Uh, and also, um, as we prepare to, um, present, uh, as the chair, um, annually, the chair presents the school board's legislative priorities to the delegation before they head to Tallahassee on January 9th. Uh, also, uh, our priorities, uh, for the most, your priorities for the most part, become part of the Manatee Chamber of Commerce's legislative platform on the education side. Um, so, uh, uh, your priorities do become a very, um, a serious document and something that, uh, I know you all, myself, our government affairs, uh, folks, our, uh, business, uh, community as well, all lobby up in Tallahassee to, to see what can, can get done this session. So with that, I'll turn to, um, with the chairs, uh, okay, here, to Andrew Colwell, who again is live in Tallahassee to give you a few minute, give a few minute update about what, uh, is going on in Tallahassee. We have a new speaker, a new president of the Senate, uh, and what he's hearing, you know, budget-wise, and then also maybe in the education space. So, Andrew, the floor is yours, if that's okay with the chair.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. Um, sorry earlier, I couldn't tell if I was supposed to say if I was here or not, but, um, Mr. Chair and members of the school board, very good to see you. Um, right now, I just see my face on my screen, and, and boy, is that awkward. Um, but thank you, but thank you for allowing me to participate virtually. Um, Sean is, was trying to attend, he is still stuck in a meeting and would like me to send his hellos. Um, this has gone on an hour longer than he thought, so I feel bad for him. Um, but Kevin, thank you for the introduction. Um, I really appreciate the school board taking the time to thoughtfully craft their priorities. I know we put a lot of work into the priority sheet that looks, um, similar to what Mr. Chapman sent me earlier. Um, I know this is something we've been working on, a few of these items, and I think you guys have done a very good job of thinking about, um, very specific and targeted priorities versus just more funding, right? Um, I think that's a, um, every school board says that, right? So the first thing I want to tell you, um, is the Senate is here in Tallahassee today. Um, last week, the House was in Tallahassee and not the Senate. Um, that is a new thing. Last year was the first year of these odd bifurcate, bifurcated committee weeks, if you will, um, where one chamber comes and not the other. Um, I'm sure that's just to make it more difficult on all of us lobbyists. However, I think that is actually due to some, uh, construction in the Capitol and some training schedules. So the first real committee week will actually be, um, in January, the week of January 13th. Um, and I want to talk a little bit about your delegation. Obviously, we had some, some changes. We had Representative Gregory go to the college. Um, we now have a new representative, um, on your, two new representatives on your delegation. Um, Representative Beltrance did not run for reelection. Uh, he was replaced with Representative Owen, who's a wonderful guy, and I look forward to you guys meeting him. Um, and then there's the new Representative Honnerly. I have not met him yet. I don't know if any of, of the members on the school board have. Um, but your delegation, your state senator, um, or at least the senator that covers the majority of Manatee County, and, um, your most senior House member are in their senior, uh, senior terms, and they are advancing in their leadership. And Senator Boyd, as you all know, is slated to become the Senate President in two years. Um, arguably, he will be extremely powerful next year, as he will be the incoming president next year, um, you know, one year previous to him taking his office. Um, so it's a great place for the Manatee School Board to be, um, in a position where your senator has, has quite a bit of power. For this term, this year and next year, we call it, you know, the legislature runs in two-year terms, he is the majority leader in the Senate. So that is a great position to have him in, um, to help advocate for some of the goals of the school board. Representative Robinson is actually now the State Affairs Chairman in the House. And I, I find that to be a very powerful position. Um, the State Affairs is as broad as it sounds, and it is the committee that has jurisdiction over any and everything that relates to state government operations, um, the way agencies work, the way state government works, anything that's just a general government operations thing, Florida retirement system, um, elections, that all falls out of the State Affairs Committee, and so he's the chairman of it. So when I look at, when I look at your priorities, and we talk about, and, uh, school member Tatum, uh, good to see you back on the dais, sir. Um, when we talk about things that you've spoken about, about sunshine, right, and that, um, Representative Robinson is now in a position of a committee that would hear bills like that. Um, so it's a great place to have him to be, and I think it's important for the school board to be cognizant of where their delegation is, um, coming into this two-year term of the legislature. Um, the, um, to talk about the budget a little bit, I have heard that last year, um, there were over $1 billion in requests from various entities and direct funding requests. Before COVID, there was only a fraction of that. Um, I'm not sure where they all came from, um, but I know that this year, Speaker of the House has been extremely vocal, um, on changing or reducing the amount of requests that simply come into the system. So I think that's important to note, um, as we move forward to the 2025 session, that the House has specifically told its members in trainings, "I want to see you file less appropriations, less requests. We've got to get that number back down." So I think the House will be much more thoughtful on what appropriations that they provide money for, um, so something to consider. But at the same time, you have a member of leadership, Representative Robinson, in your delegation, so you have somebody, um, who's higher up versus other counties out there, um, who may only have one or two House members who are brand spanking new, they're freshmen, um, and they're not quite in the position where they can maneuver in the way that, um, hopefully, your more senior members of your delegation will be able to be, will be able to do. Um, there's been only two bills, so there's been 43 pieces of legislation filed, only two of them relate to school boards at this point. Um, one has to do with teacher education, um, critical incident training. Uh, the bill directs DOE to put some critical incident training, um, into teacher continuing or instructional personnel continuing education without expanding the amount of hours that those teachers have to undergo, and it provides some statutory immunity for that critical incident training should any of those actions arise during a real critical incident. Um, there's another bill out there that expands the definition of school bus. I think we saw this bill last year, um, talking about vehicles that transport children to and from a private school, and vehicles that transport children to and from a charter school, um, updating various statutes. I think charter school transportation is already in one statute that a school bus is defined as a vehicle, a, a vehicle that transports to and from a charter school. They're putting that into another statute where it was left out, and then adding, um, vehicles that transport to and from private schools in the definition of a school bus. Um, that's a, that's a, that's a can of worms, um, but I, like I said, saw it last year, and that has been refiled again this year. Um, March 19th and 20th, uh, is Florida School Board Association Day at the Capitol. I hope to see you all there, um, up here in Tallahassee. Um, and then the last thing I want to just touch on, as I heard Mr. Chapman talk about the delegation meeting, um, I think it's very important, uh, that the chair speaks at the delegation meeting, um, as I'm sure he has always done. Um, and then another thing that I'd like to point out, and we'll work with Mr. Chapman scheduling appropriately, I'd really like to, as we've done before, the chairman, um, and other members as well of the school board, um, I know Ms. Messenger, or not Ms. Messenger, sorry, Ms. Foreman's done this, um, you know, we try to meet with your delegation members. I'd love to have you guys speak with them about your priorities, um, long before actual legislative session, so that's something we will work on as well.
Thank, thank you, Andrew. Yeah, that was good. Thank you. Um, what you have in front of you is, um, a, a one-page, um, that lists last year's school board priorities, uh, and also a list of how, um, they relate to the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards, uh, legislative priorities, and then also in front of you is, um, what was just worked on, uh, over, uh, at the Greater Consortium's, uh, legislative session, uh, that happened to be in Manatee County. So, uh, I, I will, um, stop there and, and, uh, turn it over to the chair, perhaps, to have you all discuss what potentially you'd like to see, uh, as a school board, uh, for your priorities, heading into this session, uh, and, uh, Andrew and I will take some diligent notes and, um, and then produce kind of a one-pager for the 2025 session, similar to what is in front of you from, from last year's session.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I do know the one-pager, and Andrew, I know you can speak to this, I think the one-pager is extremely important, um, not to overwhelm and, and, and go into a bunch of different things, especially when you have 15 minutes or 30 minutes with your, your delegate. So, um, I do think that's extremely important, uh, to have the, the one-pager. I'm sure there'll be some that hang on from this last one, maybe, maybe not. Um, I, I will tell the board in, in preparing for today, um, I did remove the Launch Center ask, the appropriation we were asking last year for 10 million. Um, due to what Andrew just mentioned, um, I'd read that, that Speaker Perez was, was going to want to limit, less, uh, going to want to limit some of those appropriations and things like that, um, and I think we may have a better chance, and Andrew, I know you, you've kind of alluded to that in the beginning, talk right there, uh, with some of our delegation having a bigger role, uh, in the legislature, um, in the next coming year. So I did remove that, um, from the session. If, if board wants to continue to put that on there, I think we can. Um, I do have some items that, that I would like to discuss. I don't see anybody else ready to, to pipe in, but when you are, pipe in, maybe kind of negative. If you wanted, if you do want to mention something, just hit that, that Granicus view speaker, and I'll, I'll switch over. So here's, here's something that, um, you, you are on.
I don't have it.
I gotta sign onto Granicus.
Are you in the agenda for the workshop, or are you in the agenda for the meeting?
I'm in the agenda for the workshop.
And you went view?
View.
And so I see one speaker so far.
Yep. I will click it one more time, but.
That's okay. If, if we can't do it, then we'll do it old school. Um, a couple of things, got it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, you sometimes, when the meeting, if you do it before the meeting starts, it'll like, be wonky a little bit, you gotta kind of go back and go back in. So here's a couple of things that I think that, that I'd like for us to, to discuss. Um, this was something that Dr. Wyson and I discussed during, um, the hurricanes, state of emergencies, and things like that. Um, and Andrew, please, you, you have a lot of, of knowledge with this, and if you think that this is, there's no way you could see people supporting this, um, but I think that one of the things that we struggled with during our hurricane times is when we had to adjust calendars and things like that, um, and, and doing different days, we had to deal with two different unions, right? Um, and so Dr. Wyson, I'm jumping here too, because this is your idea, and I want to make sure I wrote it down, and, and I'm, I'm saying this correctly, but basically, we're looking to, if the state can say to give authority to the school district during emergency times, right? So that's the caveat. So during those state of emergencies that are declared, to give the school district the ability, uh, to go outside of the contract to fix the one or two days that we have to do. Now, I don't, I, I do believe that there had, there had to be some constraints that you're not blowing up the whole calendar that you just had a contract on and redoing it. It's specifically regarding those hurricane days, and how to fit those in and how to work those. Um, obviously, for the three here up here, you all didn't deal with kind of back and forth of what each union wanted the days, and they want, one wanted this day, one wanted, they didn't want that, they didn't want another day, they wanted this and that. Um, I think that if, if we were given the authority to specifically during emergency declaration, that we could, uh, override some of those contracts and be able to do something like that. Dr. Wyson, did I express that correctly to what your thoughts were?
Yes, Chairman, I think that, uh, I think the notion is that when you're in that state of emergency, and yet there are still, uh, statutory guidelines related to number of instructional hours and minutes, um, it's, it, it, uh, it can be very difficult, um, to broker those kinds of solutions. And so having that as a management right, um, would move the process along much more quickly for our families.
Yeah. Thoughts from board members on that particular item?
Well, I'm glad, so, um, we talked extensively about the calendars and how they do not align from one, uh, union group to the other. How that happened over the years, I, I don't know, but it did happen, but we do need to get those aligned first of all, and then give us the flexibility to modify, like Dr. Wyson has discussed with us, I know me and probably you, Chair, uh, when we were going through those hurricanes, to have the flexibility to modify the schedule as needed. Um, there were people that were not happy, that we had to do in school class on Veterans Day. However, the trade-off was not to eat into Thanksgiving week. So there was a lot of discussion about that, and I think that most families were, you know, happy that they got the whole week of Thanksgiving off, but we do need to look at having some flexibility with the, with the calendar once we, uh, approve and vote on it. I mean, it's a, it's a working and breathing document, in my opinion.
And, and I, and to make sure, I, only during these emergency, you know, declaration of emergency, like those periods.
Right.
Um, I do believe, hey, when we set the calendar, the calendar should stay with the contract, but when we have these emergencies that happen, I think we should have the authority to change which is best to, to meet our legislative, or our standards that we have to meet for hours, et cetera. Anybody else have any thought on those, on that particular item? Do we want to add it, do we not?
My Granicus isn't working, I'm gonna, I do, just, if we can't get it, if, I don't know what Andrew thinks, but if we can't get it on a legislative, if we can't get a legislative change, we could try and make that part of contract language. Just say, in a declared emergency, the superintendent with the approval of the school board may modify the, the schedule in a declared emergency, like when the governor says your county is, you know, in an emergency, uh, because, again, legislative changes are difficult to come by, so. That's my thought on that. If Plan A, get it done legislatively, Plan B, see if we can get it to be part of the contract.
Yeah, good idea.
Look, because it does, how many counties has it affected this, this hurricane season? I mean, and then last year, all up and down. So I think it would be, hopefully, that they would do that.
Yeah.
But if they don't, then you got all these counties that have to modify their own contract, every contract, so.
Mr. Kennedy, you're the, uh?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Chad. Um, no, I just wanted to mention that, um, in addition to everything that's been brought up in the past couple of minutes, um, you know, we got through this situation, and this is now like the fifth year in a row, I think we've had a pretty significant disruption due to a hurricane or a near miss. Um, but I think when we do the calendar, you all have already done the calendar for the upcoming school year, correct? Yeah. So maybe we need to look at.
Maybe can't make adjustments.
Exactly, I was just gonna say that, just gonna say that. So maybe, um, you know, we always have hurricane days built in to that Thanksgiving week, but we are always reluctant to use them because of the obvious interruptions to people's vacations and lives and plans that they've made. So we either have to, um, adhere to those hurricane days that we have over Thanksgiving break and, and bear the brunt of the emails and phone calls that will come with it, or build into the schedule an additional week? I mean, this, this is a conversation for another time, but build into the schedule hurricane days that we will actually use, so that the contract language, which I think is a good idea, um, it becomes a moot point. So that's, that's a longer-term solution, but just something to think about.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, yes, I was just gonna, gonna add that, um, I actually agree with, with both gentlemen that we need to make sure that, particularly with the two unions, that, as Ms. Bray was saying, that they're kind of on the same page. Um, we can't all be functioning on different levels and trying to, you know, work with somebody. We can't have, you know, custodial not there while the teachers are there and vice versa. Everybody needs to be able to work together to, to take care of our kids. And, and, and I've heard a lot of the scuttlebutt about the Veterans Day. I think the schools did a fabulous job in, in recognizing the day and veterans and bringing in our veterans to recognize them and to celebrate them, um, which, you know, if, if we wanted to continue that practice to pick that up, then I believe we should continue that as well, to continue to recognize the day. Um, but I have to agree with Mr. Kennedy in that, looking at, if we're gonna, don't want to inter, don't want to impact Thanksgiving break, which, you know, again, we keep having these storms, um, we do need to look at another way in which to do this, so that we can have it built in, so that our families aren't impacted, so that people aren't trying to cancel flights and, and all of that if they travel.
Okay.
A buffer.
Andrew?
Yes.
Any thoughts on that?
So, if you remember, last year, um, we had a conversation with the commissioner on a pay issue, Chairman, and his response was, yes, we can attack this at a state level, we can also attack this through a negotiation with the, um, unions. Um, so I think, I think we should do both at the same time, right? So obviously, if we get a statutory change, that makes it easier, um, than trying to negotiate it with the unions, but it sounds like negotiating with the unions is also a vehicle.
Okay. Great. Um, so I guess we're, that's one that we'd like to have an add, I mean, verbiage you come up with.
Yeah, and I forgot to say, Mr. Chair, that, remember, we'll, I'll come back with a draft, right? So we'll, we'll, we'll tweak this language, uh, my guess is we'll get this approved, uh, I mean, it will be ready to go, but we'll, we'll, we'll figure out through sunshine how best to make sure that you all are comfortable with the actual language in this document, so I just wanted to.
Perfect, yeah, thank you. Um, second thing is, um, I know I just talked about, um, no appropriation, and, and I know Speaker Perez is, is wanting to lower some things. Um, I think if, if for, for one ask, appropriation ask, um, I think it's gonna have to be something that is like a bona fide workforce readiness inside the school. I think it's something that would be attractive. Um, and what I mean by that is, is we've done this in the past, we've gotten, you know, five million for the, the hanger years ago, we got two and a half from the federal. Um, I know we, we've got the hanger going on later on for the, the meeting today to, to discuss and finalize, um, but I think if, and Andrew, again, if, if the numbers, what you're hearing and, and things like that, I don't know exactly the number, a million, come back, I mean, now that we're already, hopefully, we'll, you know, tonight approve, moving forward with some of that, if we could ask the state for, because of the, the cost of, of building has increased, whatever the percentage is, Mr. Raul, he probably give us 40% over the last two or three years, probably at least, um, can we go back and ask for a million, million and a half, whatever that number, that, that is not too big to where they're like, no way, not too small where it doesn't really make an impact for us, um, but I want to get the board's feeling, but also, Andrew, I want to get your feeling first, because, like, you, you have the pulse of what some of these other representatives and, and things like that are gonna either push for appropriation or not.
Um, and, yeah, I can't, I can't tell if I'm on or not. Um, what I was going to say, and I'm actually glad you brought that up, I was, um, gonna make sure I added, I have seen two individual House members write to their, to their districts, because obviously, each appropriation that's put in, whether it gets put in or not, lies fairly solely within the individual member's discretion, right? Um, so I have seen two legislators put out, um, hey, I'm not putting in anything for you if it's not shovel-ready, and if it's not 50-50 match. Um, that is kind of a harsh criteria to go by if you're in a more financially disadvantaged area, um, like a very rural county, but for, for Manatee, Hillsborough, Polk, that kind of area, um, in this, where this was somewhere else, a similar area, I'm saying, hey, it has to be a 50-50 match for me personally to put it in, um, and it also needs to be shovel-ready. As far as the amounts go, um, I, I don't think a $10 million ask is reasonable this year, but that's also a conversation that you have to have with your delegation, um, as well, right? You have to think about, like, hey, I'm not gonna go ask them for $10 million, because maybe that's not appropriate, you know, there's, um, sorry, my camera's falling. Um, but, you know, a million or so, million and a half, I, I think it's a dynamic answer that we have to have a conversation with your delegation, but be cognizant situationally of what they're trying to do with reducing the requests.
Okay. So that's, that, that was the appropriation ask that I had, that, and those are the only two things. I think the third thing that I- I think the third thing that I bring up is start times, I don't think this is ever gonna change, but start times for school board members, in my opinion, maybe even commissioners, everybody, to throw you, to throw new members in at the beginning of the year or middle of the year. Budget's already been done, year's halfway through, it's kind of a disservice to a new person coming in. I would rather see it, have the election, have it where it takes place, but you're not actually in until that year's done. Does that make sense? Like that June, July. I don't think it's ever gonna happen, but I think it's something that's maybe food for thought. I don't think it's something that we're gonna change. But that was, that was, those are my few things of appropriation. Ms. Felton, did you have something for that appropriation discussion?
I did. I did a tour at MTC this morning. And, you know, it's a phenomenal facility. I still have to go to the second facility in the next month or so. But I asked, I asked them during the tour, I said, what if you had a wish list, what would be on it? And the Launch Center is their wish list.
Yeah.
They've raised $8 million themselves. They've got it in the bank, it's ready to go. And of course, as you state, with the rising cost of construction, they now need another $8 million so that they can bring this about. And it's gonna be constantly trying to play catch-up, trying to play catch-up. And at the rate in which the cost of construction is going, they're never gonna make that. They're never gonna make the goal to get that built. The only way we're gonna get that is through assistance. So, I would really like to see the Launch Center in our list.
Okay. I don't see other... Yeah, I know yours wasn't working.
I think I'm in now. The other way to do that, we had this discussion before you got on the board, Ms. Felton, and I talked to Dr. Weisong about this a little bit. I think at the time, we decided it wasn't a good idea, but it doesn't look like it's gonna happen through an appropriation, which it doesn't, is to put it on a COPS, right? You know a COPS, you know a COPS, Ms. Felton? Okay, so, I mean, if we're gonna borrow $140 million, let's just borrow $148 million. And I don't mean to sound flippant with the taxpayers' money, but the point is, is if we really need this as something that's really gonna be beneficial for the community, which I think it will be, and I agree with you, Ms. Felton, then, you know, look at it for the next, because we're gonna do another round of COPS, I believe. Is that correct? But I'd still maybe like your opinion on it, Dr. Weisong. I think at the time, when we talked about it, we thought it wasn't a good idea. But if we really want this, and it doesn't look like we're gonna get, you know, this appropriation, then maybe we should go consider that option.
We discussed that concept, I think, toward the end of the COPS process for the two elementary schools that open in '26. And I was just hesitant to add that component toward the end of the due diligence, because those elementaries do have to open on time. I think we, I think we talked about, if the board decides to move forward with the high school to open in '27, then you could certainly tack on additional needs in that next round of financing. So, that is one way of going at that. I think there's probably some additional conversation we need to have about, you know, again, there was a concept a year ago, right, that we went out for funding and didn't get, and is that still the exact concept, or is there a modification? What, you know, you know, what needs do we have? But that is certainly a way to address whatever the next step is for MTC through a financing.
So, Andrew, you know, as you're sitting, can you hear me, Andrew? I just want to make sure. Mr. Ted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, we haven't, we did have, what, we had some success two years ago with what, like $2.5 million or something for our AMP program? Is that what we got? Or do you remember that?
Give me a moment, I can, I can look it up.
Five, yeah, five and a half, five and a half.
I guess my concern is that if we come with this big ask right now, and the word has gotten out that don't make big asks, and we come with a big ask, and it doesn't create goodwill within the, you know, the legislature, that it'll just be no and heck no, or something like that, you know. But I don't know, I don't want to come up there with an ask when we know the answer's gonna be, it's almost like we're kind of poking, I don't know. What are your thoughts on doing something like that? I mean, I agree we could add it, but anyway, go ahead.
I think because the speaker has said, we're trying to reduce the amounts, we're trying to reduce the amounts. He is just the speaker, there is also one other chamber. Not saying that he's just the speaker, I mean, there's two chambers.
Right.
I think that be very cognizant of the financial situation that the legislature's trying to be in. But at the same time, if your local delegation, who is in senior leadership, and you have an incoming Senate president, would like to put in a larger ask, and would also like to fight for that larger ask, you would go with that. So, I think you have to start with a conversation with those two to see what they feel comfortable putting in.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, if they're willing to support it, sure.
Yeah, I mean, if they're willing to support it, I wouldn't say no to that, you know. But I just don't know if they are. And I do, with what Dr. Weisong said, and with the way that, and Ms. Felton, you said it too, with the way construction is moving, though the concept and the build what we had, I was told that that 16 million, what we thought would be for that number, was not realistic. And that was a number that was two or three years ago. So, I think, I think that that building is probably more than what we think it's going to cost. But I am 100% in favor, I do not want to lose sight of that. Whether it's COPS we decide, whether it's next year, when we have, when we have, you know, Senator Boyd where he's at, I mean, I definitely don't want to lose sight of that. I just don't know if this is the right time. But if the delegation's willing to do it, hey, who's to say no to that?
I can take that.
Yeah, Ms. Prey?
My opinion on adding that on to this cycle is, it's gonna dilute the other ask. If you ask for something that big, it's gonna dilute. We have on here increased transportation funding by $500 per student. You know how big that is? 500 per student? There's a lot of bus riders out there. That's a lot of money. So, I don't know if we really want to put that big of a ask on there.
Well, remember, these priorities we have in front of us for last...
I know, I know.
So, we can scratch these altogether, we need new ones. But I see what you're saying as far as just the ask, sure.
Right. I don't want to put something so big on there that the others are just kind of drowned it out. I'm not, you know, opposed to the Launch Center, I just think that, you know, it's a concept that was, you know, thought about a year or so ago. I mean, look how long it took to do the driving range for the, out in Niagara, wherever that's about out there. Took years, you know. I guess I could sum it up, and you can't always get what you want. And that's just the way it is, you know, especially with funding.
I mean, we've asked for all these things right here, we've never gotten any of these...
And we've not gotten any of that. Right. So, I would rather stick to something that, you know, we can talk, we all know our delegation, we can talk to them and say, hey, what do you think if we throw a $10 million ask on there, it's gonna get thrown out? And according to Andrew, that's exactly what would happen. Oh, no, I'm not gonna look at Manatee, the first item on there is a $10 million ask.
And that's why I brought up the AMP school, the hangar aviation, however you want to label it, because it is shovel-ready, we're ready, well, depending on tonight's vote, ready to roll. And it's workforce now, we are putting some of our MTC's money into it from capital, etc. So, I think that that is something that checks, at least Andrew's thoughts, if there was another delegate that said this, kind of checks those boxes of, we do have skin in the game, it's not an absorbent amount of money, not that eight million is compared to our budget in the state. But that's why I brought up that ask, because I think that is something that will more quickly than the Launch Center start producing workforce, traction to our area for businesses because the workforce is there. So, that's why, that's why I brought up that appropriation.
And sometimes you can get what you, you can't get what you want, but you can get what you need.
Sure, sure.
Wisdom up.
Yeah, yeah. I feel like I'm in a Rolling Stones concert.
That's right. I agree with you. I agree with you. And as we're talking through this, I mean, but that is a good point. I mean, whatever, who wrote that? Mick Jagger, whoever wrote those lyrics. It's a good point that we might want the Launch Center, and it's, but it's a big ask, and it's probably not gonna happen. But we do need this AMP hangar to really have the, a great program down there. And so, that might be something that we need and we can get. And even though we want the Launch Center, it's just the timing right now with the amount of money we're asking is just not gonna work. So, I'm kind of leaning towards, if we're gonna ask for an appropriation, asking for that AMP program.
I still think, I still think as we meet with delegates, I think, I still think we bring it in the Launch Center.
Right, you can bring up both.
Absolutely. Say, look, I mean, so has an idea. Ms. Chapman, did you have something?
Yeah, just what Andrew said, too. Remember, two years, Senator Boyd will be the president of the Senate and have a lot of leeway, and that could be a time for a bigger, a bigger ask, right?
Without doing a COPS.
Up to you all, but...
No, Kevin, you beat me with the punch. I was gonna say, I mean, it sounds like what our answers are, are we've gotta do it in the COPS when we get ready for the new high school, or wait till Senator Boyd's in a position to push it through. Is it, is it part of the five-year capital plan right now?
The Launch Center?
The Launch Center.
No.
I don't believe so.
No, I don't think so.
The hangar was, but not...
When we have a chance to do that, maybe we get it on, that might bolster our argument with Senator Boyd.
I think Mr. Rinaldi has a little bit on the five-year plan there.
Well, while he's looking, if Mr. Chapman could re-educate what Launch stands for.
Oh, yeah, I did create that, and now I probably don't know what it is.
Oh, I put you on the spot.
As I say, it's on the bottom of the document.
Yeah, is it...
I just wanted to do a gotcha moment.
I gotta look that up.
It's okay.
But thank you for remembering that.
Last capital budget had 7.5 million in for the MTC addition expansion, and that was kind of, and then another $2 million out two years for that as well. So, there was 9.5. But keep in mind, that is before we moved some of the money over for the AMP programs.
Right, okay.
I will make the comment that if people are watching from MTC, and maybe they are, I don't mean to be flippant with my comments about the Rolling Stones, and that we do need an expansion in MTC. I mean, it's, the parking is getting full there, the place is overcrowded. We need it, I'm just trying to...
Parking garage, actually, probably, you know, I agree with that.
Yeah, but the question is, how best to do it?
Well, listen, you brought up a great counterpoint, too. If we can't do it, this, maybe it is COPS. And so, you're finding another way.
I'm trying to figure it out, because it is needed, right?
It's needed. So, that's all I have, yep.
The Launch Center, spelled like a space shuttle launch, right, is a place where the idea is where you can go and launch your career, right? Launch your life. So, it stands for Leadership Apprenticeship United Networking Career Readiness Hub.
Yep.
So, the Launch Center.
Very good.
The idea by that.
Okay, so, those are the new ones that I had. I didn't really, I mean, what we had last year, I don't know if anybody wants to jump in and say, do we need this, do we want this, do you want to keep with this? I think with the Florida Consortium, I think, looks like the first three things that they had from last year that we picked out specifically, I think are pretty much what we talked about before. But Ms. Felton, you're up, go ahead.
So, I know that the state funding for Universal pre-K full-day program has been on there forever. And I don't see why we can't keep asking for it. I don't expect we'll ever get it, at least not in the near future. But I definitely think we need to keep asking for it. They want us to do this, and, you know, we always get directives, and then no way to pay for it. So, I think that that's a really, a really good ask, to continue asking that. And then also, the, let's see, what was the other one I was looking at? I kind of want to jump in with Palm Beach and Charlotte and Miami Dade on their list with the district's flexibility regarding the school start times, of course. We're gonna be facing that now. I had heard scuttlebutt that they might pull that back. I don't know if that's true. Andrew, I don't know if you've heard that at all, that they might pull back on the start time ruling? Do we have any feel on that?
Good afternoon, Ms. Felton, very nice to meet you. The former Speaker of the House, that was something, he was very interested in the school start times. Now that he is out, I'm not sure what will change on that. But I have not heard anything in particular other than, yes, I know there's great appetite amongst the stakeholders to change that.
Okay. That was it for me?
Yep. So, I mean, the flexibility, I mean, I'm all for flexibility. No question. I think, I think every district is different in what they're dealing with, transportation, and the area in which they operate the schools. For us, having to go the left and right, over bridges and stuff, I think every district is different. So, I would love to have, now, is that something that's in the greater consortiums?
I was just gonna...
Was?
It's on the bottom of our handout right there.
Okay, yeah.
Right.
So, I would definitely be for putting that into, like, if we wanted to keep the other three, put it in under the Florida Consortium one, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Prey?
And I wanted to say, too, that the Greater School Board did the review and revise campus access guidelines regarding the staffing of gates and buildings, the safety one that they unfunded.
Okay.
I would like to add that on ours.
On to the top page, the one-pager?
Yes.
Sure. I mean, we already approved the Greater Florida Consortium. So, anything that one of us feels like should be on this one page, I think is great.
I think it's...
We agreed with all of it.
Right, I understand that, but I think having it as ours...
Yeah, on this page, yeah, absolutely. So, revised from the...
And to that point, Manatee, Miami Dade, and St. Lucie all voted for the Greater Consortium.
Right.
But there's, they, these other counties have not had their meeting yet to vote on it. But those four, three did, so.
Any thoughts from anybody on the four that we had for our own personal? Do we want to keep? Do we want to toss? It seemed like the one that I mentioned with the, that Dr. Weisong and I spoke about with the state of emergency authorization, if we don't get it, you know, through legislative statute, we can do it through contract. Anybody else have any thoughts on one through four?
No, I'm good with that.
I do know that number three, Will Robinson, I was at a public event the other day where he was speaking, and I brought up Sunshine Law issue to him, and he agreed that he thought for public events, training events, that there should be exceptions. So, this might be the year to try and push that through. Andrew, if you're listening, he seemed to agree with me 100% that, you know, it is too restrictive, and that, for instance, you know, three of us, if we choose to run, are gonna be up in 2026 here, and there could be a candidate for them. And what are we gonna talk about?
Exactly.
Sorry, can't talk about anything.
Yeah. I do agree with the, and I think when we talked about this last year, put it on here, it's the perception. Like, if all five of us are go and go grab lunch in between a session at BRICS, the perception would be something nefarious is happening, right? Because, oh, look, here's board members. And so, I think sometimes in the public, those public events and different board meetings, different things, or not board meetings, like conferences and things like that, I think they do need to spell. I would be absolutely okay with them clarifying and kind of fixing a little bit of those Sunshine laws, some of those exceptions. I would be absolutely fine keeping that.
Andrew, what are your thoughts on that? Because there's, when I approached this before, it's just like, no, there's no appetite to touch, it's a hot potato, don't even go there. But like I said, Will Robinson publicly stated he'd be in favor of supporting these type of changes.
Well, what I was going to say is, unfortunately, he is not around. A chairman of the, his similar committee, I know, he was judiciary chairman, so the chairman, the new chairman there is good. But also, that would be something that I, very special, if you can talk to your, one of your House members who chairs the committee, who would have a lot to do with, to say about that. I will say, with several things in government, there's some reprieve or... I will say with several things in government, it, there's some reprieve or an exception that should very much be made. And there's a very objective reason to make it, but it's hard, I think, for the legislature sometimes to go back, once they've put such a harsh thing in place to even provide an exception or two. But you did start the conversation last year. And now that Representative Gregory is no longer around to, to help with that, I would talk to Representative Robinson. And if he had support of that issue, he, he is in a position to help with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Frer?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just didn't click off. I'm done. Yeah, I'm good.
So here are no oppositions or anything on that one. I would assume we're all okay with three. I don't see any oppositions on anybody with, with the other, the increased funding for transportation, long-term teachers to receive more compensation based on merit rather than contract type. That is, I believe that was something we were trying to do to help the compression last year. I think locally, we've, we've kind of started that, that process with our contract. I don't necessarily think that needs to be in there anymore. But it's up to y'all.
What does that?
I, I don't remember who put this out there last year. I did not. So I don't.
I think it was Ms. Foreman. I think it was about addressing comp, it was about compression.
Yeah, it was, it was trying to, to say that those teachers with the longer years that weren't in the 16-plus, they're already getting their, I don't know what their phrase is now, longevity.
Right.
That they were going to get something because of that compression that happened from the start. So that's why I say I don't think that particularly needs to be in there. Because I think we're addressing locally.
I would agree. I think that would be up to local school boards and their contract to, to figure out the compression issue rather than having the legislature try and fix that.
Ms. Felton?
I was, I'm, I'm very iffy on this one. In terms of keeping it or not keeping it, it's, it's still a problem. Compression is still a problem. And it's going to continue to be a problem as long as the starting pay keeps getting raised. When I left the classroom at nine years in the classroom, I was still making starting pay. Because.
Of a new starting pay.
Yeah, the new starting pay. So every time starting pay went up, my, my pay went up. So I could have been there, you know, as it continued 12, 13 years and still be making what the brand-new teacher that I just trained made when she came into the classroom. Which doesn't show any support for those people who have been there. That's part of the reason I ran for school board. So this is very important to me. I, I really feel like those teachers really need the, the support. And, and I would kind of like to keep it in there because anything that they can do, even if we are starting to sort, we're starting to sort it out here in our own district, which is fabulous. But we're not the only district facing this.
Right.
So, you know, if we keep it in there, then maybe it'll help other teachers, too.
Okay.
Andrew, what was the legislative, so are we asking the legislature or Andrew, anybody, what are we asking? Are we asking them to provide us, like, an appropriation within the Florida Education Financing Program to provide a salary supplement to mid-level teachers? Is that what we're, I mean, what would be the, what are we asking them to do?
That's, if I remember, that's what I, that's what I think that's what the purpose of this was.
Okay.
Was somewhere in the FFP to put that, hey, if you're five to nine, you're five to whatever that range is, that they were increasing their pay to match the increase from the new pay.
Okay.
If I remember correctly. I don't know, and, and I don't know, Andrew, if you remember, or Mr. Chapman, do you remember? I mean, I, I'm not really 100%, but I'm, I think that's the overall was.
Well, that and the statute would have to be amended. So it's, it's a, it's, it's a lift to, to get this done.
I, I think could be potentially reworded to say, instead of amend, like, instead of amending that statute, to say, I mean, this is obviously very Neanderthal work. Fix the compression prop, like, I mean, I don't, that's not what we're going to, it's not going to say fix the compression problem. But if we can word it to where we're somehow.
Where it's being addressed.
Yeah, where it's being addressed and possibly looked at. And maybe it's done differently than the statute itself.
I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
That'd be great.
We know three's good. Four, I think four can be gone because that's good, right? Mr. Dye, we did, the volunteers are now, they don't have to attend the physical workshop to be counted as core, right?
That did get changed, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Four is, four is gone.
Scratch that one, yeah.
Yes, just moving right down. Obviously, we like, number one, we added flexibility for start times to be under this one. We added the staffing, the revising, potentially staffing on the gates and things like that from the.
Right.
The bill that was passed last year. What about two and three? We still good with that? Restore discretion of 2.0 levy? Back to 2008, 2007 years? I'm okay with keeping it. I don't think it's going to happen, but.
I'm not a really quote-unquote okay with the, in the sense, like you said, I don't think it's going to, what I would rather see there is have them modify the SREP, which is the State Requirements for Educational Facilities. I think it's the statute or whether there's a rules within the Department of Education, but I think it's statutory, and reduce the cost of building schools. Because going out of the taxpayers and just saying, give us another half a mil, at some point, we have to say, no, we're going to reduce the cost of building schools. Because the charter schools are using the local county building code, and they're building schools for half as much, if not less than, than what we're building them for. So maybe we.
That's as big one of ours.
As compared to one of ours.
Like, like putting it into our priorities, getting rid of this completely from under. I mean, it's in, it's going to stay in the Greater Florida Consortium. That's fine. Just don't have to be on a one pager. I'd absolutely be absolutely okay with that in that.
Yeah.
I think everybody would.
Is that a poss?
You got, you could work on that language.
Right, right. The same codes. I mean, this, it's ridiculous. I mean.
And we can take out two completely. I mean, it's still going to be in.
Right.
For a consortium, but.
So you're taking out two?
Because again, the one page is we're going to be, get, get your time in front of our delegation, et cetera. They're going to be able to take whatever, whatever they're doing. You want this one page to be like, these are the ones that, if they were, if we ever get these changes, make big, big impacts.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and so I don't want a whole lot of fluff on here if we don't need it. So number three, amend Florida statutes that any school sees tougher funding is required to same academic.
Right.
Standards. Do we want to keep that one on there?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm okay with that, yeah. So it looks like for the Greater Consortium, one, three, four, five, or one, three, and then we added two more. So we'll have four for the Greater Consortium. We'll have one, two, three up top for us. We'll have five, giving state of emergencies.
Right.
Gives the authority to make changes to the calendar.
Right.
Another one is the building codes.
Right.
So that's five up top, four down below. Are we okay with the 1 million, 1.5 appropriation for the AMP and asking our delegation? I think, I still, I still, I, I think no matter what our appropriations, I don't care if it's that one, asking about, about the, the Launch Center, I think that's got to be done with asking delegation over the next month. As we have, before we get to where they go to session, before we get to the delegation meeting, I'd rather ask them, what, how do you feel about putting this on there after being told the speaker said?
I agree.
Say, yes, we'll put it on there or not. I don't want to put it on there. And then they're like, well, I'm not filing it. So what does it matter then if we put it on there or not?
I, I know Andrew has a, a member meeting here at 3 o'clock, but, which doesn't mean we have to, you all have to stop talking, but just in case he logs off. But I do want to remind you, too, that we have, you know, we do have federal representation. And, and we have a very senior member of the House of Representatives in Vern Buchanan, who's a, a good friend of the district. And I know he's eager to help as well. So that could be something that we could explore as well.
And workforce, I think is going to be something he would jump on to.
Absolutely. And considering the makeup of the House and the Senate in this next new Congress, it's a good idea perhaps for the board to take advantage of one particular party taking, you know, has full control of, of Washington. That rarely happens. And so we maybe take advantage of that with a very senior member. So if you all are okay with that, maybe I, I can work with the Congressman's office on, potentially, and ask as well. In, in this area as well.
Did he, did Representative Buchanan, is he now the chair of appropriations, or he will be chair of appropriations?
No, he, he, he had a chance to become chair of House Ways and Means Committee. He declined to, to take that chair. And, and he endorsed a colleague. He said he had enough work to do as vice chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. But, but I think he's probably, if not top five, maybe top 10 of, of members in the House of Representatives in seniority. So that's something we should take, yeah, take very much advantage of, that kind of seniority. And obviously, our, our Sen, US senators, too, well, one US senator is, is senior as well. So we have a good opportunity here to get something through up there as well. So if, with your permission, I can work with the Congressman's office on appropriation as well.
Anybody else have anything else on the legislative session?
Andrew, are you still there by any chance?
Yes, sir.
Hey, real quick, someone brought this to my attention to think about, not that we need to make it a legislative priority necessarily, but the, the law about unions and them being able to stay in existence, there's kind of this loophole in there somehow where it, it never gets resolved one way or another, whether there is a union or not, is not a union. They can keep trying to get their membership, to get the 30% or whatever they need to go out and get a card. And I'm not necessarily for or against unions, but resolving that so there's not this kind of never-ending loop, loop going round and round and fixing it. Is there any talk up there about trying to change that and solve that problem?
I have not heard of any. I, I, I have not heard of any. No, sir.
Okay. Well, just so you know, if you, there, there's kind of a, a little glitch in that law that they changed about how unions can regenerate themselves. Or what's what I'm looking for is certify themselves.
Yeah, they have to recertify.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And it allows them to, if they don't recertify, then the very next year, before they decertify, they can go out and get another, like, 30% and start the whole process over again. And it just keeps going and it never ends. So anyway, if you hear that up there, and it is something that, it's not good for the union, and it's not good for us, because it just puts us in this never-ending loop of not being able to resolve whether there's going to be a union or not for different employees, so.
Mr. Tatum, was there some, wasn't there something about not showing us that, that they can verify their membership?
That not showing us they can verify?
Was there something about that, Dr. Wyssong, that we had heard about that with unions need to be able to verify their membership in some way? To show that they made their.
During that process of recertification?
During that process, to show their, their.
To show that there is that interest or whatever?
Public records request that Perk, that's it, Perk, we made a public records request to Perk to, to verify the membership, and that was denied to us, right? Or something like that?
This, this involves, Mr. Chair, the issues that you're talking about in terms of.
The recertification process and the interest, showing of interest to seek a recertification election. So in that process right now, the rule does not allow for disclosure of those interest cards back to the public employer. And there is discussion right now. In fact, this morning, there was a, a Teams meeting to discuss a rule change at Perk to address, impart this issue. And I expect that we will be seeing some rule changes coming out of Perk for the rule development workshop, well, rule development going forward next year.
Okay.
But it is an area where we, we could use some direction from the legislature as to chapter 447.
Right, there's a difference in a rule from Perk than a statute.
There is, indeed.
Right. So I think what Mr. Tatum is saying, is there any way, Andrew, that we can get.
I think Andrew had to go.
Statue changed. That would be my.
Yeah.
If we can look into that.
Yeah.
The rules, you're going to have all kinds of rules, but if you don't have a statute to kind of pair with it, then you're just beating your head against the wall, in my opinion.
Typically, what happens is the, the agencies that are responsible for implementing those statutes are given the first crack at addressing those rule changes. So the preference is, and I know it works this way, especially with DOE, where the legislature will sometimes say, can't we just fix this by a rule amendment? That process is, is a relatively short 45 to 60-day process to adopt a rule revision. So sometimes legislators have told me in the past, anyway, I can use a personal example, let's go to DOE and see if they can change that rule. I think the thinking, to address the question going back, is there discussion of addressing this part of the union statute 447 to clarify some of these threshold level recertification issues? There is a push for that. I'm aware of it. I don't, I don't know where the lobbyist stands right now in, in terms of, of that. But there is discussion going on among school districts that I'm aware to, to address those issues. And what we've gotten in the past from legislative committees and legislators was try to fix it by rule. And I agree with you completely. If, if the statute was more direct and less, having less loopholes would at least clarify for both, both sides how to address these things. But we've seen movement, and, and I think we'll, we'll see some additional rule challenge, rule changes before we get to legislation.
That we could actually, that that employer could actually see proof of interest is the biggest thing, too.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that good? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Appreciate your time. And tell Andrew thank you very much.
Yep.
Now he had to roll to his next thing.
Super.
All right. Let's move on to item number two, which is board discussion regarding the naming of the Harvey K8 campuses. So, Dr. Wyssong, if you just wouldn't mind giving me a quick, giving us a quick recap, the last time this was brought up to what was, and, and Dr., or, Dr., Mr. Dye and I spoke about this, and I went back to, to the minutes to make sure, what was our, our action, the board voted to start moving forward to create this new K8? And if you just want to recap that?
Certainly. So the board previously approved the opening plan for the new one-school, two-campus Harvey K through eight. And so the staff's been working through the, the voluntary reassignment plan to populate that, the rising sixth grade at the new campus. Parent meetings have been held. Student assignment has done its part. So we're moving forward there. In terms of the, the, the name piece, at this point, we've proceeded with Barbara Harvey K through eight. That's, that, that's what will be added to the master school identification file. And so it's just a question of whether the board wants to give us any further direction as a staff. I think the board held a discussion previously about the differences in the policy between changing the name of the school and the procedure that's involved there. There is also a need to, or potentially to designate how the two campuses should be referenced. Again, in our, our planning purposes, you know, we were thinking about the, the grade levels to be served, but even those could change over time, over the, over the years. So we, we do need to figure out from a map perspective how we're going to designate each of the campuses. And so that's, that's where the staff is at currently.
Sure. Thank you. So with the new board change, I want to bring this back up to, to see what the thoughts were. Ms. Frer, I see you led up to speak if you would like to.
Yep.
Jump in.
I don't know if everybody's been out that way, but that area is booming with development, a hospital, community centers, everything. I'm in line of naming that new campus, Barbara Harvey at North River Ranch, because people.
Because people identify schools by where the regions they are in. Like we just named Lake Manatee. I think that identifying this campus at North River Ranch would be beneficial for everyone in the community. So that, that's where I'm at with it.
Mr. Kennedy, you were led up, and then Ms. Felton?
Oh, let me undo that.
Thank you, Chad. Superintendent Weisong, I just have a couple of questions. I was following this when you all had this series of conversations, uh, earlier this fall. So I am pretty familiar with the issue. But, um, just a review question, Superintendent Weisong. Is there, are there other examples in the state of a school campus with two physically separated campuses sharing the same MSID number?
Yes, there are.
There are? Okay, so this is not, we're not like the first to do this?
No.
Okay, good. You already, you have just mentioned also what is my biggest concern going into this? Is that differen-, differentiation between the campuses? Because I can see parents, oh, I thought I was supposed to be at this campus. No, you gotta drive over to the other one, or a delivery truck shows up and drops a bunch of stuff on the sidewalk. And then, oh, no, this goes to the, to the other one. So I think that, that some kind of, uh, difference in the names, I was just throwing it out there while, while we're talking. Barbara Harvey North, Barbara Harvey South is a good way for, it's just one idea. But I think there really has to be some kind of lingo with the, with the school and the community so that it's very easily, um, it's, they're very easily identified. I do really, I think it's really a groundbreaking idea. When I was following this conversation, I was really interested in the idea of shifting grade levels between two campuses based on, um, based on shifting enrollment. So I think that's really, that's really an interesting and creative way to, to tackle this problem we have with growth out in, um, in the northwest, excuse me, northeast, um, part of the county. But, so that, that, that's all I got.
Northwest is coming.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's coming soon.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, um, tho- those are really the, the two, the two items I wanted to bring up.
Okay. Ms. Felton?
So, as you know, that is my district. I live a mile and a half. Well, less than that if I could actually cut through, uh, the gated community between me and it. But I live about a mile away from that campus. And we were there yesterday for Price Patrol. And then, uh, I drove up to see the under-construction campus right after that because that's where we ended our, our tour for the day. I've attended a PTO SAC meeting there as well, um, in the last month. And the, the school staff, the parents, they all call it the upper school and the primary school. That's what is, it's called in-house. It's the upper school and the primary school. That's how they referred to it at SAC and PTO. Uh, when I've talked to the different staff, that's how they've talked about it. I think we need to keep in mind what is their preference. It's their school. And not just name it what we want. My concern about naming it Barbara Harvey K-8 at North River Ranch is that the other, the other campus doesn't have a designation. Are we going to call it at Publix? Because that's the closest thing to it. Maybe name it by the roads? I'm fully in favor of the north and south. Or, but again, the school, the staff, the people at the school, the families, call it upper school and primary school.
Chad, if I may, real quick.
Yeah?
It's interesting to hear that. I did not know that, and that's, that's your area. So you know, I, I think that's perfect. I would, I would not, I totally agree with you. I would not want to impose something on them. If they already have terminology, let's just keep running with that.
Ms. Bray?
Actually, we were toured there yesterday and staff came to me and said, we like the North River Ranch. So it's kind of odd that some are telling you one and others are telling me they like the North River. It don't have to be at North River. It could be Barbara Harvey North River Ranch.
Okay, but then it goes back to, what do we call the southern campus?
It has a big concrete thing on it, Barbara Harvey Elementary.
Have you not led up, not yet? Okay.
Yeah, this is an interesting question because it's the same school with the same MSID. So, you can't maybe colloquial, I'm having trouble with words today, colloquially, if that's the right word. We might call it something different, the two campuses something different. But I think officially, both campuses, I believe, have to have the same name.
Yes.
Because they have the same ID number. So we can't call one at North River Ranch without calling the other one at North River Ranch. So I just think we need to, I, I think I'm right on that. Some, if I'm not, you can correct me, but-
I'm sure you are.
Well-
I kind of agree with both, um, Ms. Bray and Ms. Felton. I think that as a whole, I'm absolutely okay with Barbara Harvey K-8 at North River Ranch. And I think that each campus should be called from what they call themselves. If it's upper and primary, great, that's, that's fine. I think from a culture, what Dr. Rio has built at that school, she does a phenomenal job of some other things. I think Harry Potter's like their theme or whatever, I'm not really sure. But, you know, if you had, I mean, they can, they can name whatever they want, right? I, I, I do agree that those campuses, I think what you're going to get from a internal point is you're going to use upper and, and what'd you say, upper and secondary?
Upper and primary.
Upper and primary? That's what's going to be used internally. You know, I think that's what eventually is going to be used. But from a holistic, this school is the Barbara Harvey K-8 at North River Ranch? Upper, primary? That's their distinguishing of if we're holding our SAC meeting in the upper or the primary or the Christmas play this year, because the upper has a bigger auditorium, is in the upper campus. That, to me, is them as a school communicating to their parents and things. And I agree, let them, let them do that. Let them pick upper and primary. I, I don't think there's any issue with that at all.
But then it goes back to the question of if we're going to change the name to Barbara Harvey K-8 at North River Ranch or Barbara Harvey K-8 North River Ranch, we now have to go through a six-month process to go through completely changing the name.
We didn't change the name.
I, 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 I think that, um, this, this particular, I'll, I'll go back to the attorney, of course, because I'm not one. I think that this doesn't fit neatly into any one of our policies. Because we've never had this before where we have an old and a new, changing the MSID number. So I don't know if this fitly neat, fits neatly inside of that, um, policy? Mr. Dye, I don't know what your thoughts are and opinions on that?
Is the question, is it a change of an existing name? Is that what your question?
Yes. I mean, clearly, if we go that route, then we've got to wait six months to call it Barbara Harvey K-8 theoretically. Anything, any change from Barbara Harvey Elementary would theoretically fall. That's why I don't think it fits neatly into this policy at all.
Well, yeah, I agree with you on that. I don't, I don't think it does. Seems like most instances don't ever fit neatly into this policy. The, uh, this policy just gets added on to over the years. Well, if it, if you look at it as, as an existing school and that the new portion is still just part of, is just like an addition to the existing school, then in that case, you are changing the name of an existing school. And it triggers the six-month rule. If you view it, if you, if you were to leave the, what's already there, the Barbara Harvey School with the same name, but you come up with a new name for the, I guess what you call it, the upper school, you could view that as a, as a brand-new school. But, I don't know, it, 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 to me, sort of feels more like you're changing the name of an existing school, triggering the six-month rule.
For me, it comes down to once, the language there that says, once adopted. I don't know that the new name of the new school has been adopted.
But it's still all one school.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch-
I'm sorry, but it's still all one school. It's just two locations. Like MTC has the main campus and the west campus, but they're still Manatee Technical College. So Barbara Harvey would be the same thing. Barbara Harvey K-8, you know, whether we call it south, north, upper, primary, whatever, it's still one school.
Are we getting a new school ID number for this, or is it the same?
That's what I was going to talk to, talk about.
Again, we're, we're treating this as an expansion of the school from a K through five to a K through eight. So we're working on the same ID number. And we're updating- how the school is structured and operated.
Right, during the workshop, that's not-
Mr. Kenny was, well, um, did you?
I'm done. I'm not doing a good job with my-
That's all right. Well, let me see if the attorneys are doing, you guys good?
So, we, we have, we're in, I concur with Mr. Dye's analysis that it requires the six-month period.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with the attorneys after having heard that because we're going to, it sounds like we have to rename it no matter what. Because right now, it's Barbara Harvey Elementary. Is, is the MSID name attached to the number, correct?
It is, and I think in the prior meeting, the discussion on the, I don't know, speak for Mr. Dye, but I thought we had a, an exchange. And the, that, the, the elementary or the K-8 is just a label that describes the grade levels served by the school.
And not officially-
And not, well, and, and therefore not a, um, yeah, not, not a full name change, right? It's a grade level descriptor.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, officially, right now, the school's name is Barbara Harvey Elementary. So if we go to Barbara Harvey K-8, that's a name change, no? So I think we have to do this name change process no matter what, is the point I'm trying to get to.
That, that's a little bit problematic. I'm not doing a good job, Chuck.
Raise your hand.
Ms. Bray was first.
We had an extensive workshop on this about one, one school, two campuses. And there was a consensus, consensus, you're rubbing off on me, to keep the Barbara Harvey. Change it from just the label of one through five to K through eight. And that was basically the board's consensus. Uh, but during that workshop, there was discussion in defen-, defining the two different locations. And that's why I'm more the regional type of advocate. Because to me, somebody coming into our community from another state is buying a place in the North River Ranch community, they're going to check to see what school is for North River. So if it was K through eight at the lower and at North River at the upper, I don't see where that would trigger a name change, six-month thing. We're just identifying locations.
So you, so when you, when you're saying-
We're just adding a tagline.
You want on the north, on the, the new one, to be called that?
Yes, I don't, the one, I don't think we need to worry about the-
The entire-
The entire thing. I just want to identify that new building at its geographical location.
Okay, Mr. Tatum?
Oh, you led up?
Finally, playing by the rules. So, there was that discussion, I'm, I'm trying to remember that we, we, we talked about the fact that if we just changed it from elementary to K-8, that that was not a name change. Are you guys still, is that still your opinion, or, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that doesn't bring in the North River-
Right. So then we had a discussion about-
It's Barbara Harvey, and then you're just saying kind of how each campus is used.
So then there was a discussion, I'm trying to go back and retrieve it, about if, if we just called it a campus, like a, like a north, at, like a North River Campus, North River Ranch Campus, and then that, that wouldn't necessarily be a name change. You're just designating a name for the campus and a name. And you, we can call the other campus whatever, whatever neighborhood is down there, or we can come up with some campus name down there. I agree with your, Ms. Bray, with your thoughts about making it a community school. And I, I do want to be transparent in that, you know, the, the North River Ranch name is associated with the builder who was building houses up there, and we partner with them. And we work this project together, and, and it is a community, right? So it's, not every child that goes to that school eventually may not live in North River Ranch, but a lot of them will. Just like a lot of them live in Palmasola, and they go to Palmasola Elementary, and a lot of, and the kids that go to Maaca live in Maaca area, and the kids that go to Lakewood Ranch High School live in. It, it builds a sense of community to have it associated with the, the name of the place where most of the people live. So, you know, maybe a compromise position here is that, is that we just call it the North River Campus, right? A North River Ranch Campus, and that way we can avoid the whole name change, six-month policy. You know, that we, we, if we have to go down that route. Because that, and I know that, that throws a little monkey, if we have to change that, Mr. Dr. Weisong, it seems that throws a little monkey wrench into your processes because you need to get a name now so you can get signs made and all the things that, you know, we, we don't want to change the name right now.
I mean, we'll, we'll do whatever the board directs, Mr. Tatum, as always. But yes, you, you run into all of the financial and the logistical pieces there.
Yeah, so, so maybe as a compromise, we could do it at, uh, Barbara Harvey K through eight, North River Ranch Campus. I'll throw that on the table and see what-
Yeah.
And, and the bottom one can be the primary campus?
Yeah.
And you can, there's actually, the sign has space underneath where it says elementary.
Sure.
It could actually carve-
The new sign would be-
Right, right.
I'm going to change the signage anyway.
The upper, uh, Ms. Felton, and then Ms. Kenny?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we're going to have to change the signage anyway because it says elementary. So it's going to have to say K through eight. Again, that goes back to what are we going to call the original campus? If, if the one has a designation as location, then the other one should as well. And, and students don't just come from North River Ranch. Copperstone's right there. There are students who are, we're, we're looking at changing the lines of where kids go. And, um, you know, I, I live in Harrison Ranch. We're, like I said, not that far away. We could have kids from Harrison Ranch over there as well. And there's so many other, other neighborhoods all around. So, you know, while it, yes, it will, it will have kids from North River Ranch there, and it will be their local school. It will also be the local school for lots of other kids as well. So we need to keep that in mind. But that goes again back to what are we going to call the original campus? It is not in a neighborhood. It is on a main road. You're going to name it after, you know, at, which road is that one now? Is that one Buffalo Creek? No, that's not Buffalo Creek.
Moccaswell.
Moccaswell.
Moccaswell, thank you. At Moccaswell, I mean-
Moccaswell Campus.
You know, something, but, but I don't want-
It's a pit of snakes.
It's true.
The kids will be excited. We have snakes on campus.
Oh, my goodness.
But, you know, I, I feel like we need to treat the original campus with the same respect. It, we can't just leave it floating out there as, as a nobody. If we're going to designate the one, we should designate the other.
I'm good with that.
Again, but I would really like to get the population of the school to have a say in that. I really think that we owe them that. They've been there for a while. Dr. Rio's done a fabulous job, as you guys have said, about building community there. It's a wonderful group of people. They're, you know, they have such community. The PTO invited, um, me out to their family carnival, and it was completely free. They could, they paid for everything. It was completely free. Everybody came. They asked people to donate canned food. They're very involved, the families out there. And I would, I would like to have their thought process as well. And, you know, and I would personally want to defer to whatever it is, the actual physical people who are there every day, I would like to defer to what they want.
For the original campus?
For the whole, the whole thing. For the whole kebabang.
Mr. Kenny?
Yeah, I need to come back to this because I'm still, I, I still don't understand how we, how we get out of a name change. Because I just looked it up on the accountability spreadsheet. It's 0857 Barbara Harvey Elementary is its official name with Florida DOE. We have to change that name. So, we have to go through the six-month process. That puts me at odds with our attorneys, and I trust their legal advice more than my own. So I, I just want to kind of, and we don't have to do it today, but I mean, it's just, I think it's something that we need to, we need to decide as a board which way we want to go. And then informally, Heather, I- And then informally, Heather, I completely agree. I defer to stakeholders on whatever they want. But that official name and MSID number issue, I think it's gonna come back to bite us if we don't be mindful of it.
Have we already gotten some approval of, from DOE?
No, we're, we're going through that process now, right, and to be clear.
They could come back and say, no, you can't do it, you gotta do it.
Certainly, anything is, anything is possible.
Yeah, so we're going through that process.
Do you have a timeline as to when we might hear back?
Early, uh, should be early spring.
Okay.
And Chad, if I may?
Yeah.
Just, I'm not up to speed on this part. So, what, what exactly to this point have we asked DOE for?
We're, we're going through the, we're going through the process now of updating that file to indicate that we intend to have students in grades K through eight. And then we have to move through and provide details on how all of that will look. And then we wait for their feedback.
Okay, so then, with the state anyway, the name issue hasn't even come up yet?
Right, then, I mean, and, and it, and it won't, again, this is really the board's policy, right? About how, about how a name.
Changes.
Is, is, right, it, it, right, is chosen, right. Right, that, that, that part is not.
DOE's.
The part that, right, that's not the part that DOE will look at. It's really because it gets into the accountability rules, right? Cause you're, you're moving from a. A, 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 a single-level school to a combination school, changes your accountability formula. There's a lot of moving parts.
Gotcha, okay.
The, the issue could be if DOE comes back and says, no, you can't use the same MSID on both.
Right.
The new one's gotta have a new one, and then it's a whole nother.
Well, and to be clear, e- even if that happened, that doesn't change our operational plan. It just means you'll see a school grade for each facility.
Right, operations will say the same.
Right, but it doesn't, it does not change anything that we're doing.
Gotcha.
Right, Chair, Jim.
Yep, Ms. Bray, you're up next.
On the policy seventy-two fifty, it's what we're talking about here. Under C, I mean, it, it's so. Back and forth, the first line, the name of a new or existing school, once adopted by the board, shall be considered permanent. Shall be considered permanent. That's either a new or existing. And then you go down to the next line. Well, actually, two lines. The board shall allow, again, shall, and we can debate what that means, allow a permanent, a period of time of not less than six months. For said community deliberations and debate for action. So, this policy probably needs to be changed because to me, that first line says, the board has authority to name. Change or adopt an existing school name to be permanent. But then we're talking about the six-month rule. And that's it, that's the, right, it's under C, right.
Shall, not much.
Shall, 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 and shall, shall, and shall, on both.
That, that's why I started out my comments with the chair by saying that it depends on whether it's once adopted. So, as to the new campus, my legal conclusion is that you have not adopted a name for the new campus yet. You have an existing name of Barbara Harvey Elementary for the existing campus. If that is going to be changed, that change would require the six-month provision. Because it is a, changing a permanent name that has already been adopted. As to the new campus, if it is going to be the same or a different name as an existing campus, then you can do that. Once adopted, that becomes permanent, and if you're going to change it, that name then would have a six-month window as well.
That I agree with.
So, I have a question on that. So, if we're looking at Barbara Harvey Elementary, current existing building, and we wanna change that one to K eight. Are you saying that that should go through six months by adding that designation? I wanna make sure I'm clear.
A name as to an existing facility once adopted is permanent. If you're going to change that, it has to go through the six-month window.
Okay, so even just switching from elementary to K eight?
Yes.
It's a name change.
Okay, then I think we need to do the six months.
Well, I think, I think that regardless. Yeah, I mean.
But we're still gonna have to identify the two different campuses.
Well, yeah, no, you're still gonna have to identify two campuses, you're still gonna, if we're gonna do the Harvey K eight, I mean. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I guess this, it's, it's been, we've already eclipsed like two mon, I, I guess my question is, when, when does the six-month trigger happen? And, and this is our own policy, right? So, at the end of the day, if we don't follow our own policy, it's on us anyways.
So, the policy reads, from said date for community involvement. I assume that from said date refers to the time that the board is going to consider a name change of an existing.
Which would've been back in like October.
Right.
Correct.
Maybe even further.
I think it was a September meeting that this, that this was first discussed.
But that was, that was only the first discuss, I don't know what happened prior to that, I don't remember anything else prior to that with discussion of. Did it, would it, I mean, did we discuss this when we were building? I, I mean, that's my point, is the six-month? Again, this is our own policy, I, I just, um, the six months from when that happened in September, the six months when we discussed it potentially at a workshop. And we were going over our guaranteed minimum prices, and we mentioned it then, I mean, when, when, when does the six-month trigger? I guess, and I think that's up to us. We, it's just the, the whole, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, I, I, I think where we're struggling is that. We're in an innovation area.
Yeah, it's new.
We're in an area that, that the policy doesn't contemplate.
Right.
And so, I, you know, again, I, I, I don't see the critical nature of the elementary to K through eight change. That word describes grade, a, a grade span. And so, if the board took, if the board took no action and left the school name as elementary, and we just serve grades K through eight, that would just confuse. So, I, again, I've, I've always viewed that as a label. But I think the difficulty is, this exact scenario is not contemplated by a policy because we're, we're operating differently. Because of the hyper-growth environment we're in.
Mr. Tatum?
What if we got a, a new, I think your answer to me before is we're gonna use the same school ID, right? Is that what you said, Dr. Weisong?
Yes.
So, if we got a new school ID, then, then it's a new school, and we can name it whatever we want, but that, is that a laborious process that does not, I mean, I don't know what that process?
Well, yeah, I mean, so, when you think about it, when you think of the now Lake Manatee, K through eight, right? We went through a process where we accepted nominations from the, from the, not just from the school, from the entire community, right? And then the board went through and whittled down the finalists, and we got more input, and so we went through all of that. The reason we did not do that here. Was that we did not want to give the impression that the board was considering dropping the Barbara Harvey name altogether because that.
Right.
That was never something that we contemplated, but just putting out a call for nominate, for name nominations might've suggested that, right? So, that's why we didn't do that same process that we did with what ended up being Lake Manatee K eight. So, that would be, you know, again, if we undid all of this and we were just opening a middle school, right? Then you would go through and you would name that middle school.
We don't have to go through that process though, right? We, we can just name it whatever, we're working.
That is correct, but I think the, the, the policy says that, that the superintendent will bring recommendations to the board. The policy doesn't talk about all of the public input elements. That's just been a past practice here.
I'm just trying to think through this as we're talking about this, cause it's complicated, if we had, if we had a new.
I, well, I think with the new MSID, the problem with the new MSID is that that campus is not just going to be six through eight. It will be hosting fourth and fifth graders. And so, they fall in the elementary school grade in one, and not the other. And, and if you had two different IDs, you're now doing two different. School grades, so I do think it's simp, it's simpler to have the one.
My suggestion was to get a new school ID for the whole thing, and then we just decide we're gonna name it Barbara Harvey. K through eight, at, uh, North River, North River Ranch Campus, and then we can pick a lower, and we can call the other one the primary campus. If you had a new ID, then it's a new school, and we don't have to go through the policy, and we know what we wanna name it, and we just, you know, but I don't know what the, what the, what the, what the administrative. Work would be to get a new school ID. Except for just for the whole thing, for the whole thing.
It would involve closing one, right? Yeah, so it, 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 it becomes a little more complex.
Well, my position is, after hearing all this from one school board member, is Barbara Harvey K through eight. North River Ranch Campus, we can call, we can pick some other name for the lower campus. I've heard all the legal arguments. Mr. Dye did say earlier that changing from K eight to elementary, he didn't believe was a, was a name change. We have to assume some risk as board members. We ultimately get their advice, but then we make the decision, so that's my position, is one board member is calling it North River Ranch Campus, and then picking some other appropriate name for the lower campus, keeping the same MSID and going from that.
I agree with you, and I would say that the, they can pick the lower one, it can be lower, it can be whatever they want, originally, and call it whatever, whatever they want. Or just the Harvey campus. Ms. Feldman, you're up, and then Ms. Kenny.
Thank you. So, I would like to, I mean, I will support whatever the board, of course, agrees. And I'm, but I would like to get some buy-in from the, the stakeholders. Can we defer this vote until our meeting in January so that we can at least, you know, poll the school and, and. Maybe have some parent meetings or something so we can at least find out what the school would like? Cause again, they're the ones that have to live with it. We, we have, you know, four to eight years sitting here. But they're the ones that are gonna live with it, and I would like to.
About naming both campuses?
They're both campuses, I would like to know what they, what they want.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, Heather, again, I would agree about stakeholder input, absolutely. I don't know the, how pressing the need, we could get that feedback perhaps over months. It doesn't, you know, we don't have to have an answer by January, is what I'm trying to get at. But I think we're making a mistake in this conversation in that we are intertwining two very different things related to the same topic. There is the, there is the official formal name of the school attached to its MSID number. And then there's the informal, what do we put on the sign out in front of each campus? So, I think, Mr. Tatum. You, you were talking about like, what's our compromise, you know, what's our middle ground? And I think our, our middle ground is that, we, we can poll the stakeholders. Stakeholders can provide input to us, and we can decide informally, this is what we're gonna put on the sign out in front of each campus. But formally with DOE. It's an MSID number, and it's gotta have an official name. Obviously, from what you were saying, I don't think you want, I don't think you want the North River Ranch name on both campuses, you just wanted it on the upper campus?
The new one.
Correct, okay. So, that would be an informal name that we could certainly through community input come up with. But that informal, that informal naming is to me very much different and separate from the official name, which again, I'm coming back to. I really think we have to go through the six months. And Chad, just from memory from having done this, previous names, including Barbara Harvey Elementary. The, the clock started when the board actually took. Action through a motion at a meeting to say, we are going to name the school. And that action item on an agenda started the six-month clock, which began the official gathering of public input, the focus groups, the parent groups, things like that. So, I, I, I would've been right, I would've looked it up before, I, I didn't realize we were gonna go this deep dive on it, but that's, that's my memory of it. There was official action taken, that started the clock.
Yeah, we just didn't wanna risk changing the Barbara Harvey, that's why we kept the Barbara Harvey.
So, that was September, so I mean, six months.
Right, so we, that was the primary reason why we didn't put that out. It's cause we wanted to maintain the Barbara Harvey, we just needed to geographically identify each campus. And that's where, you know, the North River Ranch came in, and I, you know, the South, I don't know what, I never really thought of that because.
Mr. Tatum? Were you, did you, yeah, you came back?
Oh, I'm click.
I, I hear you, Mr. Kennedy. Just wanna let you know I heard what you said. Dr. Weisong, for you, what's the, after you heard all this conversation, I mean, it's, it is nice, and I think in the optimal situation to hear public input and go through that process. Does take a while, it could be months, especially with the holidays. I'm concerned that doing that, though, is gonna delay everything, right? We're trying to get the school open in eighteen, what, how many months, twelve, twenty months from now, something like that, so.
No.
But, but, go, go ahead, no, no, not even nine months.
Yeah, nine months.
All this delay and naming and what we're gonna put on the signs and everything, just, it's too late in the game to go down that road. And I stick to my original position, what I said about North River Camp, North River Ranch Campus. We, let the, as a compromise position, let them decide what they wanna call the South Campus, they can call it whatever they, get some, you know. Although we still have to go through, but maybe that would just be like, almost like the PTO could just get together, or the SAC could get together and give us a recommendation or something, rather than some. Long process with surveys and all that kinda stuff, right? And they could call it that, and then we can put that on, give that to Dr. Weisong, bang, put that on the sign. And then. If Dr. Weisong believes, and really the people, Doc, Mr. Kennedy, that are gonna decide whether elementary, elementary to K eight requires an, an official six-month. That's our own policy that we could change, I mean, they're not gonna care at DOE, right? I mean, we're just gonna, they don't care, right?
They just may make us have two ID numbers.
So, you know, we, we are, are deciding to interpret the policy in, in that, as Mr. Dye said, the changing of K eight elementary is not a name change. Therefore, our policy, or changing a name doesn't apply because, I know Mr. Pendley had a different opinion, but again, that's, we hear legal recommendations, and we, we make a decision. So, I'm sticking with what I said before, that it's really not a name change that. Designating elementary to K eight, the, the name is what's there, and that we go with the upper campus name, North River Ranch. Campus, and that we let the PTO or the SAC or whatever change there, or decide what they'd like, make a recommendation to us, and then we can vote on that for the lower campus.
I like that compromise, I like them, let them recommend to us what they would like the South, South Campus to be called. Maybe it's the Harvey Campus, maybe it's whatever.
And that lets this process get going, cause we're trying to get it open.
Right.
Ms. Feldman, you were.
Yep, I am, I am with Mr. Tatum on keeping the K eight, just Barbara Harvey K eight. I don't feel like we really need to jump into a whole new naming process for that. And of, of course, you know, you've already heard me, I really want buy-in from the community, I wanna know what the, the school community thinks. What do they wanna, what do they wanna call it? They, as, as we are expanding this for them, I want their buy-in, I want them to be, have ownership. And so, you know, we can sit here and, and discuss it ad nauseam forever. Although we have another meeting later tonight, but I do want, I do want their opinion. So, if we could, you know, we'll keep the Barbara Harvey K eight, I completely support that. And then just, you know, give them a month or two to tell us what they wanna call the campuses.
I think that opens us up to more, they could change the Barbara Harvey, that's what I'm afraid of.
No, it shouldn't change the Barbara Harvey because that's the name of the school. We don't wanna take Barbara Harvey's name off of it, we wanna recognize her for her contributions to our community. And just what, what they wanna put on the sign that says, this is this campus and this is that campus. And, you know, as Mr. Kennedy said, just, you know, what do you wanna call the campus? What do you, what do you call the campus? And, you know, if, even if you get the kids involved, that also gives them some ownership as well, and their parents. So, what do you wanna call the campus? This is, this is your elementary school that's now a K eight, what do you wanna call this building that you're in right now?
Okay.
So, my, my original position was that I'd, I'd like the North River Ranch designation for the upper campus because I do wanna honor the partnership that we've had with the builders. And people don't, maybe like, oh, you're playing kidding the builders, no, I wanna honor the partnership, that they've, they've taken, you know, in, in talking. to the gentleman who is the build, the primary, you know, owns the building company, they've, it's been a partnership with us. So they've really tried to build the community around the school so that, whereas down at the lower campus, they haven't done that. So, yes, I'd like to, you know, people at the lower campus can figure out what they want to call it, but I think there's something to be said for honoring the partnership that we've had with the, with the builder. They've made a big effort to build the community around the school and make it functional, make nice bikeways, nice pathways, pick a nice piece of land for us, and so, you know, I'd like, I'd like to honor that. So pick the lower one with community input, I'd like to honor the partnership with the school, with the builder at the upper campus, just like we have at Lakewood Ranch, just like we have named a number of other schools around the county that have the name of the community around it, even Parish High School for that matter, right? That's my position.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay.
So there are three of us that want that, or?
I mean, I know there, it, it seems like there'd be three, I will definitely keep it on the, the, uh, tonight's agenda to do that. Um, and obviously we'll go from there and see a motion and discussion and things like that. Um, but it seems like there's a consensus. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, just one final, um, thing. I, I do agree, again, informally, calling it North River Ranch, I, I totally support that for all the reasons you just said. Um, I think that is a nice compromise, let, let the, the, I keep wanting to say lower school, I keep thinking upper and lower-
Original campus.
And secondary and primary, so I keep having to, okay, wait, it's, it's primary, and let the primary campus decide what they want on their sign out front. Um, and maybe just a way, and this is something new, um, because I, I am concerned about, I feel we're not following, we would not be following our policy to just willy-nilly change it. So maybe what we can do, it only takes thirty days to change a policy, so maybe we come up with a policy, um, if we want to dive this, and, and of course, we're going to have a lot more input from the state.
Time to restrict.
So this might all be moot anyway, but that's just another way we can go after it.
Discussing this policy can definitely be something we tackle later on.
It's not my to-do list.
That wasn't obviously the need for today, but yes, that's definitely something we can throw in on our, the next policy bunch, you know what I mean?
Possibilities, yeah.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
It's actually on the workshop list to do eventually, so.
All right, so I want to move on to the last one, so we can get ourselves a break here before the meeting. Uh, Dr. Wyson, I know we discussed this for school board operations and communications. Now that new school board members are here and it's been about a month or so, I know you want to go through any thoughts on the communications, operations, what we're doing, that sort of thing.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, um, board members, uh, you've had a busy, um, few weeks, um, since the reorganization meeting. Uh, I enjoyed, uh, spending time with you all at the, um, Florida School Board Association Conference last week.
I lost.
Um, and certainly you all attended various sessions on governance there. Um, you've all also been through a, a, a one-on-one briefing now, um, to get ready for, um, tonight's board meeting. Um, and, um, Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Felton, you've gotten to experience some of the kind of communication protocols that we've been running under as it relates to things that come up at schools. Um, you've all also seen the, um, workshop topic spreadsheets. It's another, I think a practice that the chairman put into place. Um, and so, um, I just wanted to, um, take a moment to see whether there was any, um, discussion, um, or any interest in changing up any of the things we've been operating under. Um, so that was kind of the first purpose for this. And then the second is, um, we need to talk as a board about what we want to do in terms of, um, FSBA, um, organized, um, training, uh, for the, for the board and I. Um, the prior board did go through master board training, um, and so we've kind of got two different options we can do now, um, as a, as a new group working together. One would either be to do a kind of single, uh, custom session with an FSBA trainer, or we can go back through the master board, uh, process. Um, and I, I believe I heard last week that they're updating that training, um, and, um, would be ready to offer that again starting late February, early March. Um, so both of those options would be on the table, just depending on what the board would like to do.
Thanks. Um, I'll start real quick just by saying, I think that, um, I think doing a one session would be good, um, especially here in the beginning. I don't know, uh, doing a full, I guess doing a full master board training again, which was like, what, four sessions and it took probably six months-ish, something like that? I just, that, I, I don't know if, um, with what's coming up, I know in the next several months and the new school's getting ready, et cetera, I don't know if that's necessarily needed, but I think one day or kind of condensed would be good. Um, because I think there is a lot of good stuff with that, with that training. And then as far as operations and things like that go, I've said this before a couple times, um, and, and we really couldn't do it because of some logistic issues and things like that. And I brought this up to, to Dr. Wyson and, and also to Ms. Rinaldi about workshops, kind of where they take place and how that looks. And, um, sometimes this feels too much like a meeting and, and, um, I have asked, and I, I want the board to say, if you guys are like, no, we're fine here, that's great too. Uh, but, you know, is there somewhere that, that would make workshops? And most of the time we don't do them, obviously, back-to-back like this, like we're doing today. Most of the time we do them on a Friday, you know, at, at ten o'clock. Um, so is, would the board be, uh, okay with finding another location? Perhaps that's, um, I'm just making places up, two oh three, maybe it's, uh-
Two fit.
Who, um, uh, Wakeland, um, shoot, maybe one time it's going out to Lakewood Ranch at the new, the new board meet room out there. Who knows, right? I mean, obviously that's, we got to see IT, such, you know, logistics, and I don't want to give MSDB all like, what are you, what are you talking about? Everything's out of fit, right, in our space? But, um, I just want to see what the board thought about that and, and, um, kind of changing the workshop vibe, I guess. Other than that, I'm really pleased, I, I'll tell you this, at FSBA, you know, we get to talk to other board members from other county, other counties, other districts. Um, and they're like, you know, they don't even speak to their, uh, superintendent before meetings sometimes.
Right.
It's like, wait a minute, you don't even have briefings and about what the topics are going to be, and, and I really appreciate how, Dr. Wyson, you've brought in, you know, Ms. Rinaldi's there, you know, Ms. Sellers, Ms. Jensen, and, and so when those, when there's questions arise, you know, the, the deputy superintendents are in there. I, I don't feel like any real procedure other than, I think workshops, um, is a different, it's different than a meeting. Um, and I just feel like this can somewhat be too meeting-esque. And if, and if we had that in here because of the way, a certain PowerPoint or a certain presentation or a certain something, you can do that. But I just want to see what the board's thought of, uh, that, that would be one of my changes of, of operations. Uh, Ms. Felton, you're up first.
So, uh, first thing was the, okay, all right, so I have to go back because we're talking about two things at once.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so first off, um, I felt like the onboarding was really great, um, for us, that, um, I agree with the briefings, that was, it was really informative, I got a lot out of it. Um, and it was great to have everybody there, so I, it's like, okay, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm the newest newbie, right? Um, Mr. Kennedy has been on the board for two terms, so I'm it. I'm, I'm the brand-new baby on the, on the, in the board here, so.
They're grown up fast.
Yeah. Uh, but, um, that, it's been, really worked well for me. Um, I feel like I'm, I'm getting the information I need, uh, I don't feel like I'm drowning at all. That was something people kept asking at FSBA, are you drowning yet? Nope, not drowning yet. Um, and because of that, because we have this process, we can meet with the, the folks. I mean, one of, uh, the new board training, a brand-new board member had asked, uh, where do the agendas come from?
Mm-hmm.
And I was just kind of like, oh my, they're going to drown, they're going to drown, but I don't feel like I am because I know where the, I know where the agendas come from. I know who's in charge of what. Um, so I'm going to say that everything has been going really well. Um, I appreciate the communication we get, and I know Dr. Wyson feels badly when he has to call us in an evening or on a weekend to tell us about some sort, some, something that's happened, but I appreciate those calls. I don't want to, I don't want to see it in the newspaper or on, you know, on my Twitter, sorry, X, whatever it is called, account. I, I like to get it firsthand, and, um, thank you all so for the play-by-play of the, uh, football game the other night. I appreciate that as well because I wasn't able to be there. But, uh, I like that. I really like getting those, those just little texts, let me know what's happening, and, and so please, absolutely, uh, I want to keep that going. Um, with regards to master board, um, again, newbie, um, so I don't know what I'm missing. If you don't know what you don't know, so I don't know what I'm missing. So I'm going to have to rely on the rest of the board's opinion on that. I obviously would like something. Um, and, uh, as I, as I told Chair Choate today, I, I'd like to get some time to, in the sunshine, everyone, uh, to talk to y'all and get to know you more as, as people. Um, you know, I've, I've sat in the audience quite a bit and I know a little bit about all of you, but I'd like to get to know you more, find out about your families, what do you guys do on the weekends, you know, that sort of thing. Um, so if we can't, you know, do some of that chit-chat-y stuff in master board, then I'd be happy to do that any other time where everybody can see us talking. Um, but, uh, I, I want to get to know you and continue to have a, you know, I want a good working relationship and as, as they said, uh, the, the outgoing board members in their last meeting, to stay boring here so that we all have a good working relationship. So that's my, my thoughts on the process.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tatum, and then Ms. Brown.
As far as master board training goes, it is good, Ms. Felton, to go through it, but the fact that three of us have been through it, and Mr. Kennedy, did you go through it previously?
I've been through it too.
Four of us have been through it. It is a very significant time commitment, so maybe the one day that you were talking about would be nice. And then, you know, they have individual, individualized other services and training at FSBA that would help bring you up to speed, you know, especially for, uh, you know, people that have other employment other than the school board, that's a big time commitment to ask everyone to go through it again since four of us have done it before. But one day would be, I'd be good with that. Again, one of these compromise positions we try and come up with. And then as far as the workshops, my, I think in a perfect world, if we could tear down this dais and have the workshops here, that would be great, but we can't. And my concern is that if we, number one, if we have a workshop with a lot of public interest, two oh three's not going to work. I guess we could just move it down here. And while, but, but the other one is, is that if we had it over at, at any other building other than here, that all these people have to hike it over there, right? I mean, it's all set up to work here, and then, you know, Laura and Danielle have to, all the paperwork they do, they got to put it in a box, put it in the car, drive over to Wakeland. I mean, it just, it just works here. So it's not optimal, but it, it ain't broke, don't fix it kind of thing, right? And, you know, where if we could tear down this dais, it might be a ten, and it would be great, but it, it works. And for logistical reasons and time reasons and saving the driving back and forth to Wakeland for these people up here whose time is valuable, it just seems to work here. And it's not optimal, but it works. I would recommend keeping it as it is here without the ties for the workshops.
Ms. Brown?
Okay. Master board, yes, go through at least a, a summary.
Something.
You'll learn a lot in one day from how we do and don't like, what things we do and don't like. Um, it, it's basically just getting to know each other, to be honest with you, expectations, conversations is what it's about. Um, as far as workshops, um, we've got some pretty big topics coming up this next year. Uh, maybe if there, I mean, if we have, when we go down to zoning the schools, and we know that's coming, get ready, public, it's coming. Uh, I know that there was a, a board meeting or even a workshop, I can't remember, Mr. Kennedy, you were there, at the convention center because of the public interest.
It was the naming of-
Parish Community.
Parish. Yeah, because I was there. So, um, in cases like that, I think we can make those things work. Uh, but as far as having them in two oh three or out in other places, I think having them here is fine for me. I'd just soon keep coming here, and if there's a great deal of public interest and we need a bigger arena, then that's where we need to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Chad, I don't think I hit my-
Did you have another? I just forgot to, for way, to weigh in on the, the workshop process.
Okay.
I feel like I agree with you, Chair Choate, that this feels kind of very official when we're all sitting up here for the workshop. Um, and it would be great if we did have like a table where we could sit down and actually workshop things where it doesn't feel quite so much like we're making rulings on the future of the district. But, um, again, it, I mean, even if we just pull the tables together in the middle of the room, um, you know, that would be great. I, you know, but, uh, what, whatever works. I, I don't want to disrupt the staff, um, and-
The staff.
The only, the only other thing I was thinking of is, again, when I was at MTC, they do, uh, have the facilities to have a meeting where you can do, uh, live, live streaming. Um, so, you know, even if we wanted to pop over there and try it out one day or check, just check it out and see what it's like, um, it'd get some, some of us over on the other side of town periodically and, you know.
That's not far from me.
Yeah. So, that, that was my, my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, real quick, I, I think that the answers have been said, so I just want to express my support for ideas already brought forward, but I think two oh three's a really good idea. We can obviously reconfigure, and the board has, in the past, used two oh three for very productive conversations where we put, in the far side of the room, we put kind of a square of tables and then had rows for the public. And there was a few workshops, this is back in my first term, there was a few workshops where there was a significant public presence in two oh three, but the room was set up in such a way that the, the board could sit around a U or a square, talk to each other face-to-face in a very informal setting, and we had up to, from my memory, thirty people, members of the public in the room. So it can definitely be done in two oh three. Um, Chad, as you were talking, I, I, I like the idea of moving around. Um, it makes, I, I feel it makes us more accessible to the public because, you know, getting downtown and so on and so forth. But, but to Mr. Tatum's point, um, you know, it does require a lot of staff to unplug and pick up and, and, and move.
Tech me off.
So I think, I think that two oh three idea is definitely the right way to go. And if we have something significant, now granted, the naming of Parish Community High School, that was a regular board meeting.
That was huge.
That wasn't a workshop.
It was huge.
But yeah, um, and, but if we have, do have a hot-button workshop, you know, we, we could bring it down into here. Uh, but whatever we do, I'll, I'll show up for it, so. I promise I'll be there, even if I got to drive.
All right, sounds good. All right, um, thank you all very much. And that's what you're looking for, Dr. Wyson?
Perfect.
Everything's working well. Until it doesn't, I guess.